I actually have 6:02, so we're getting started just a little bit later. I'd like to welcome everyone here to our April Organization meeting. And so we're at this point, we're gonna get started. And I'm gonna get back, remember, I've already warned them up here, it's been a long day, so they've got strict instructions. If I stray off the path, they're supposed to bring me back online. We hope that most of you will succeed, but that's the instructions we're working on. First, I think, and I wanna make sure here, is we always ask you to stand for a little silence.
We've been doing this for years, I guess, mainly for what we hope to accomplish here tonight. Our veterans scattered throughout the world. I think I was down at my board, Veterans Memorial Park today, and a lot of names on our food line. Almost like cemetery, but I'm not ready for that yet, but if you would, we'll bow our heads and have a little sign.
Okay. Next, I think, is our pledge allegiance. I think we have students from Mrs. Parks School, our East Franklin Elementary, so Ms. Parks, if you can bring them up.
Okay, we have Erin McAllister, and Chloe Clary, and Ally Norton, and Caitlin Hinton. They're our fourth grade for East Franklin School. And they're excited to be here, and we're all excited to be here.
They'll turn, and they'll go. You're gonna, we're gonna wait for you out here with your cue.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
Excellent. And all four of them knew it, by the way. Next on the agenda, before moving to our spotlight, is the approval of a minute from our regular scheduled meeting from March 18th. I think all the board members have a chance to look that over. Were there any corrections, additions? Have motion approved, I hear a second. Have motion say all in favor, signify I say aye. Any opposed, so move. Next, before we go into public comment, are our spotlight on people programs. Dr. Duncan will be my... First, I think, my recognition is Devon Lombard. Hey Devon, come on up here.
I'll hold up the smoke if you don't hold up the big one. This is Devon's artwork. She submitted this artwork, and it was accepted. And it's gonna be part of a very, very special event on May the 5th. So if you wanna tell us about that event, I'd be happy for you to do that.
Hi, I'm Naomi Albee, and this is Jessica Carpenter. And we represent the six art teachers here in Macon County Schools. The art education program is thriving in Macon County Schools. We're all very excited about our upcoming Fourth Annual Student Art Exhibition. In an educational climate of testing and accountability, we must have a balance of creativity. Teaching students creativity is a deliberate process, much like teaching literacy or math, and is certainly just as important. In art classes, our children learn to solve problems with no prescribed answer. Our students learn to express their thoughts, their feelings, and their ideas through the visual image. Now more than ever, our children need the skills learned through participation in the visual arts to help equip them with the challenges they will face in shaping the future. We invite each of you, the school board members, to come out to the Macon County Public Library on May 5th, and see the amazing artwork that we see every day in our classrooms. We are very proud of our students' achievements here in Macon County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Devon, this is intended to you for your artwork contribution to Macon County Schools. The Fourth Annual Student Art Exhibition invitation and poster. So all of these things that you see around, all over the county and everywhere else, all of that design right here was by Devon, and we thank you so much. Thank you.
Next was our recognition of our Duke University Talent Identification Program students.
Okay. One from Macon Middle here. All right. Have a great opportunity here. The Duke, the talent program is offered every year in our school system. And students take an exam, and their potential for success on these very difficult standardized exams is worthy of recognition. They really have done really, really well. And so I'd like to congratulate the following ones. And this is on the SAT test. All students have to take the ACT now in North Carolina. Previously it was SAT. But the Duke program is related to the SAT program because it's called a select university. And if the student selects to go there, and that university selects them, I know this is early in their life, but they're headed for a great deal of academic success. So Morgan Glenn. Megan Jay, is she here? Victoria Stillwell. Lauren Helm. They're a little different certificates, because Morgan's participation was the highest on the SAT level for this program of any student in Macon County. So that was kind of an additional qualification for that certificate. Okay.
Next is our... James Watson.
Okay, James here. He's coming up this way. Okay, is anyone from South, South Macon, Paula, or...
Megan is here. James is working with her class.
All right, we want you, do you have some slides to go?
We do.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and present it, then we'll watch that. This is to James Watson. Certificate of appreciation for his contributions to the preschool playground at South Macon Elementary School. He's a World Capital American, a fine student, and a job here. So if you wanna go ahead and play that, tell him we'll see what he's done as a project in terms of that playground there.
Mom, the great, the best guy I've seen.
Oh, okay. Okay, James, you wanna say anything about that project? What you did says a lot. Thank you very, very much.
Next recognition was for Margaret McAllister. Is she here?
She's right here. One of the unique opportunities in North Carolina is the Governor's School, it's held every summer for different kinds of things. And most every year, someone from Macon County has an opportunity to go. It requires a lot of paperwork preparation, doesn't it? Just, just to get by all of that. But also, she has been selected to attend the summer session of the Governor's School of North Carolina. She is our only Macon County representative, and that's why some counties don't have any. But we have a great one here. Thank you, Margaret, for what you do there. She's gonna be in the School of Social Sciences, so one of these days, she will be a social worker in our community that will respond to all kind of crises. Thank you so much.
Our new energy savings, this is, I think, Dr. Duncan's.
Okay. We had a pretty good month. We're trying to keep cutting down on this kind of stuff. Last month, I think we gave one to the people that had the least increase, but this, this month, we're having several that had good programs. First is the, I think, the Bronze Certificate, which is, well, that's a silver one. I'll go ahead and give the best first, okay? And I'm, I'm gonna give this certificate to the central office, Angie Cooks, who tells us to shut off every light in the building every time. We come up here, and there are not lights in this boardroom all day long, or in the kitchen all day long, or in my office even all day. Doesn't mean that we're, we're trying to do the right thing with all of that. Gold certificate this month goes to East Franklin Elementary School. AD34, ours, theirs by 26 percent. I know it, that's good. Thank you, thank you, Sharon. And the, the Bronze Certificate is, they decreased theirs by 9 percent, and that was Cartujie Elementary School.
I think, next we have, I think we had some presentations. So I think first was our Franklin High School Foods Class.
Good evening. I'm Susan Thompson. I'm one of the three family concerned by teachers at Franklin High School. I have the best job at the school. I get to teach cooking, I teach Food 1 and 2. I have about three of my students, two, I had all, I had them all. I have one write down Foods 1, and I have two in Foods 2. You'll get the right thing or make the stuff. We have a problem in the kitchens, they replace the stove caps, they fix our garbage disposal, they do a lot of work for me. And Mrs. Haycock, if it wasn't for those gentlemen helping, if we couldn't do what we do. And a quick thing, this is through our USDA, we get a lot of free food through the USDA, through the cafeteria, that stretches our budget. We get a lot of cheese, a lot of hamburger, a lot of chicken, a lot of oil, a lot of stuff. So we do a lot of cooking during around those businesses, but that way they can cook and we spend our budget. First I'd like to, first they make something for them. Can I take you out of chocolate? These are normally made in Foods 1, but they're not gonna make them until next week, so my Foods 2 class made them. I'd like to introduce Kristen Gimble. She's with my Foods 1 class. She's gonna take a couple minutes, and then there's our Foods 2.
Well, in Foods 1, we learn about how to clean, and how to prepare, and make our meals. We learn about cut presentation, electric, and why. All about what you do before you get into the kitchen. And how to, how to clean before, before and after. And, like, in our class, we have this kid. He's actually in our group, and we love him, and he's one of our OCS kids. I love him to death. Do you want to have a discussion?
I'm gonna talk about what we make in Foods 2. First we start out with ADBs, salmonella, we have to break monkey bread. I'll make them, you're saying, keep, but if someone tastes good, maybe I'll pay for an ass. Second, we garnish it, it's a small section, but it's very delicious. And we finish it up with cakes, and we make three cakes. And this is Jenna Cooks. We offer the surf saint that we do for the birthday week. Stuff that you need to know for the surf saint. And at the end, if you weren't, you take the surf saint, and have our students this semester pass it.
Glad my wife's not here, she will be doing that.
But they learn a lot of the basics on how to cut, and just put whiz throughout. For learning, like, boy, how to measure, some of them never cook, they learn how to measure. They learn the cutting terms, they learn the cooking term. We have successes, we have some failures, we eat them both. Mr. Schills has eaten some of our food. Mr. Baldwin has, Dr. Baldwin, I'm sorry, Dr. Baldwin, has eaten.
They go out of our food.
These skills they want in the home. And surf saint, if you own your restaurant, they have to have a rating. And we cover all about the season, how to clean, how to cook into the right temperature and back, so that the students that take the test, they can pass it. It makes them more employable, and employability skill, that now through the state of North Carolina, you can only get 100 if someone, anybody is working in that restaurant, someone has to be surf saint certified. So this makes our students more employable in our community, and helps our community. So, I think, since you've had a busy night, so just get out of your chair. Do you have any boys that... Oh my gosh, half my class is boys. Oh, yes. You got bats, or something like that? Half my boys, my one, Foods 2, I have half, half my class is boys. Oh, yeah. I have two kitchens, mainly, one will is all boys, there's five of them. Three of them are bats, football players. And then I have another kitchen that's a little bit, in my Foods 1 and 2, one, half of, half is boys, half are male now. And they're better cooks than the girls. Now they, it's, we're not doing it on a non-conditional, but half the class are young men, and they love to cook. And to be honest, some of his taste, the class loves it also. And they get the free food, so they get to eat at the cafeteria. I've had several food plates, it has helped to hungry, and they get to eat. So it does a lot, but this. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have a entrepreneurship project that we do. We get to learn about how much it takes, and how much it costs to open up a restaurant, and how much we have to do. Come by on a sun Friday, they can cook anything they want, they bring it in, and we have it every period, so if you're hungry, and you're by Franklin High School, stop on it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for coming to share in that with us. It is a very strong part of our school program, and we appreciate what you do. There are a lot of, there are a lot of jobs out there in the restaurant industry, and they won't be starting at zero. They'll have some experience, and we hope to market that, so we really appreciate that particular class, and I just appreciate y'all being here. For just the audience, it's, it's not easy for them to come up here and address the school board of Macon County. And that's why we try to give these opportunities for them to do that. They're gonna have to address various groups during times of their life, so this is a good experience for them. Many of them have never been before, grew up in a dark environment, so they're not coached in anything like that, but they, some of them have, they sold that. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I think next on our schedule is the Knights of Columbus. Dude, I think we have them front row here.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Lamb Foundation. The Lamb Foundation was established in the 70s by our past state Deputy Bill Scott. What Lamb does is, we collect monies through our Tuxedo Program and our corporate donors. Eighty-five percent of that money that we collect, our council in particular, stays right here in Macon County. Fifteen percent goes to the state to help institutions like the J. Iveson Rural Center. But the Lamb Foundation supports the intellectually disabled throughout the state of North Carolina. Lamb is specific to the state of North Carolina. Our council, this, this year, graded $1,062.20 that we have provided between our special, our exceptional needs classrooms. And last year, Grant and I, Phil Cook and myself, just went around to the classrooms and gave the teachers the checks. We thought that that wasn't really honoring the teacher department. Because when we did, the teachers were gracious enough to give us scores for our classrooms, showed us the things that they were doing. And I gotta tell you, these are some of the most dedicated and wonderful individuals that we have in the school system. So as I call your names, those of you that are here, I'd like you to come up and please accept these checks from the Lamb Foundation. Mrs. Kimson. Mrs. Solder. You ladies would tell us where you're teaching when you come up here and present the...
South Macon Elementary.
South Macon Elementary as well.
Mrs. Rogers, also from South Macon Elementary. Mrs. Passmore, also from South Macon Elementary. Mrs. Hughes, from Iowa Valley. Mrs. Long, from Iowa Valley. Mrs. Kinsley, from Iowa Valley. Mrs. Burner, from Mountain View Intermediate. Mrs. Flynn, from Macon Middle. And Mrs. Houston, from Franklin High School. Thank you guys for everything that you do. It's, it's just been wonderful to see your programs in action, and we very much appreciate you. Let's have another round of applause.
Thank you very much. We, we really appreciate that, and we know that you have other things you could do with your money, but we really appreciate what you do for us. Wonderful. Appreciate your contributions to communities. Thank you very much.
And while we're talking about that, I just wanted to tell everybody, 'cause these guys are helping too, Special Olympics, it's gonna be May 3rd at Macon Middle School, the Western Regional Games. So anybody that can come, y'all are very welcome, and we hope to see you there. And we do appreciate all the Knights of Columbus doing to support us.
And the next time you see us handing out Tootsie Rolls all over you, then you know what we're doing. We had a signup sheet outside for public comment, which is next, and no one, didn't see any names there. That doesn't mean, so at this point, we will open up our meeting to anyone that'd like to address the board on any topic you'd like to talk to us about. So is there anyone here that'd like to do so? Okay, I will take that as enough, and move forward. Next on our, for our meeting is what we call the consent agenda, several parts of that. I'd give the board time to ask any questions about that at this point in time.
I was looking, Mr. Hanning, you ready? Talk about the paper question, you'd lock in at the factory.
That's for me.
Who's needing it?
Sorry, I'm going.
Okay, all right. I didn't know what a notarized waiver is a volunteer.
The factory has actually asked us to have the students sign a waiver form that would release them from liability. The permissions side part is ours, and the waiver part is the factory. And so I have two notary publics who have volunteered to be there on site to sign those waiver forms, and notarizing said that they're a legal document.
Mr. Hanning, if we approve this, we become the ownership of that, right?
I mean, I think liability wise, the school system's got it anyway. You're not gonna escape the liability by not having that, that waiver done. I guess I'm not, they're gonna have each parent do it, because...
Yes. The form, the factory drew up something, and upon the approval, if you need to see it, I'd have to get it from the factory. I think this is something they've done once before, and that was just the procedure that was in place. So I kind of, it just got passed down to me. So I haven't actually seen the waiver form. I don't know if they were not gonna give it to us until we got it approved, and then I don't know, same kind of backwards.
When I saw the words notarized, I understand the waiver, but it's...
I don't know, that's just something they said would have, and if you don't feel like it has to be, if you want to have some liability anyway, I don't know that that's a, if it's necessary.
It may be satisfied, they're gonna leave.
I don't know.
They do be about it, but that's...
Yeah, I don't, yeah, so I have two volunteers that are coming in to notarize that even. Is there any other question you had about the factory?
About how many chaperones would it be, you represent this school?
There's gonna be twenty, there's gonna be twenty chaperones, and we have two, literally like two and a half police officers. One's gonna be doing a drop in, but I have two there staying the whole night. And providing, I mean, we pray that we get 200 kids there, because we do this money to send our kids to leadership camp, $300 in the hand. So we're planning for the maximum, which is 200. As far as grouping, we, students, we broken down into groups of 10. They will be given colored bands, and a chaperone will be assigned to them with a colored band, and an identifying shirt on, if you've seen them, they're safety green or purple riding, since I've got swag, save them ladies and gentlemen. So they'll have an assigned chaperone for them.
Appreciate you doing it, and wish you luck Friday and Saturday.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not once a pledge of the board concerning the consent agenda. No motion to take the consent in executive session, give it a second, and a second. All in favor, signify I say aye. Any opposed, so moves. We're trying to make it those that wants to wait around till we come back out. Personnel, Mr. Moore.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have a big issue with honor board interviews. We have interviews with assistant director position at Franklin High School, have to have a name for it in short order. Tommy Tricher, director, we've received several applications for that position, we hope to go through that process very soon. Ms. Ledford asked that we place school psychologists and speech and language pathologists, those out there, so we could hopefully find someone. Very difficult positions to fill, and we wanted to try to beat other school districts so to beat the individuals coming out of college right now. So we hope to be able to tie these positions up very soon.
Seeing the board members have any questions, Mr. Moore? No, we'll move on, thank you. Under policy approval items, we have several, let's come up, Mr. Shepherd, party to the elementary school PTO fundraiser.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. Country of Jakes PTO would like to do a fundraiser, exacting on May 6th from 5 to 8 p.m. Unlike make teachers night at McDonald's, where the teachers actually come out and work, and we receive a percentage of the tille, this is just one that we promote. And we contact our parents who connect in, and we make sure the community gets out there and eat, and we don't have to work, but we still get a percentage of the tille.
A motion to accept, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Franklin High School Skills USA, Dr. Baldwin.
This is a request from Mr. Pickens to raise funds for the Skills USA Club. Basically, the students will be selling batteries, interstate batteries. They'll get a portion of proceeds, fifty percent if they actually deliver the batteries, and forty-five percent if they're through online sales.
Any other questions on delivery? Who'll be doing that, Dr. Baldwin? Be it the students, or who likes everyone to deliver?
Um, I believe that they'll come to the school, and we, the person who purchased the batteries can pick them up, or we can get them to them somehow, which may involve the students, or we could do another route if you'd like to go that route.
That's the only question I had, where have the students delivered? John, would we be exposed? Plain reason for that?
Not a reason, I'd say. And I think it's pretty much in line with that.
That ain't your driving in, actually.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, there's a motion. Motion approved, second. All in favor, say a aye. If opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
I think we have two, is Mr. Jenner here?
Yes.
If you would, we'll just cover both at the same time, Mr. Jenner, if it's all right with you.
One of them is simply profit, part of the profits from Kilwens for a particular period of time. Our students don't do any signing or anything. The other one is a number of different things. The girls' basketball, to host tournaments during the summer, have a car wash, conduct a small student basketball camp, same thing for boys' basketball, a tournament in camp, middle school girls' and boys' basketball, softball tournament during the summer, and car washes during the summer, volleyball tournament during the summer, jamboree, a small student camp, high school boys' soccer, a small student camp, and high school girls' soccer, a small student camp. They plan to be busy this summer.
My question is to accept, so very excited.
So, the second, Mr. Gill.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, say a aye. If opposed, so moved. Macon Middle School FCA fundraiser? I think, okay.
Just go.
There's several on there.
Okay, I thought that's...
Are they all covered? The second one is, on May 4th, we would like to partner with Fats for a pancake breakfast. Seven dollars a ticket, we would receive four for the profits and all kids. And the big one is the end of the year celebration for fellowship of Christian athletes. I currently have sixty-two students on the list, kind of like church, but only about thirty show up, and really about twenty that are truly regular and stay vested in the program. And I would like to take between twenty and twenty-five students, we're still working out logistics based on the projects they participated in, to Pigeon Forge for a weekend outing, which will actually be on Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday return.
These are, are these, you know, are they involving school days, or is it...
These are, no, this is after, this is after school's out. This will be June the ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And I would have five adults attending, and there's up to ten FCA leaders from the high school. We would have various Bible camps and stuff while we were there. But we wanted to take them to Dollywood for one day, and just hopefully produce some energy for next year going into it, to keep more people vested into the, into the activity.
Do you have a question?
I did not see the dates there, they may be somewhere reflected here.
Well, we were, the dates were intentionally left off, just because we were trying to play with the calendar, my chaperones, I mean, obviously, I have to have reliable people going with me, and was hopefully gonna have those adults who've been working with the program along, so it ended up being June 9th, 10th, and 11th for the days. And that was left off, at the beginning, it was May 24th to 26th, but something with the trip to, I think it's Six Flags with the middle school, we had an issue there, so it ended up being June 9th, 10th, and 11th after school was out.
Okay, we reflect that, and then...
I make a motion to approve your fundraiser, and we are gonna move your field trip over in with the rest of the field trips, so approval there, we will have approved, or I will win the motion to approve.
My question is for the fundraiser.
The fundraiser, probably.
And then the other, that addition will be part of the consent agenda. A motion to approve fundraiser here, the second.
Okay.
Second, third, all in favor, say a aye. Impose, so moved. Mountain View Intermediate fundraiser, I didn't see Mr. Sutton, is he here? Or is there someone? Okay.
My class has been working on a unit about random acts of kindness and doing things for others, and Gay Bingham's name came up, because he was a student in our school a few years ago, and he's fixing to have surgery. Y'all probably know, and I know there's a benefit at Part 200 Day this weekend for him. He's having failure of his kidney, and he's gonna have kidney transplant. And my class was brainstorming what we can do to raise money for him, and we decided we would sell lollipops. And they wanted to sell them starting this week, and collect the money, and take it to him this weekend at the benefit.
I make a motion to accept that, and I would say hats off to you for teaching the kids for the acts of kindness, something people do.
A motion, second. All in favor? If opposed, so moved. We'll follow the best. Two thousand thirteen fourteen, it's Franklin Elementary, student handbook, Ms. Parks.
We just had a few changes. One was, we changed the conference with the teachers between, we changed from four o'clock, since, since the four, from three to four. We also made a change with the absentee policy, and what we did was just undermine it bold, made it bold, so parents can really read that and know that we are a stickler on the kids' minutes. Also, medication, the nurse, we wrote the policy there to go along with the board's policy. Report cards, we changed the sentence to third and fourth grade for progress reports. We added a sentence in the school about the sponsored trips. And this was my thing, that I didn't want to approve any out-of-state trips, because I just, I have a problem with little kids going to Atlanta and things like that, so that's just me. So, hopefully, that's okay. Also, let's see, we added a car pickup. Now, we have signs that the students, we had them all year, but we didn't have it in the handbook last year. They have to have a sign in the car window with the child's name on it before they can pick up a child for safety reasons. Otherwise, if there's not a sign, they have to come inside the building and show I.D. and pick the child up. And then tardies, we changed it from eight-thirty, that parents have to come in at eight o'clock or a little bit after eight. Any questions?
Any more questions?
I don't really have a question, except as the other schools are developing their handbooks, we're intending for us to be consistent with the new medication policy that we had that we adopted, that that policy is reflected, that we're not doing one thing in the schools and having something else here. That all schools should have that in their handbook very specifically, about how to handle the medicine there. I appreciate that, and then we'll allow the principals the freedom to do some of those things, I think a lot of those things are good. The out-of-state trips, that's certainly within prerogative of principle, and there are some that are approved. Sometimes there's a, I mean, we're not too far from some events and things that may take place, just short ways out of town, you won't have to go about twelve miles south when you're out of state. But, you know, those are looked at, and I appreciate as far as being consistent with that, too. So, the report card process, the progress reports, some of that, it'll go in their handbook, some of that may change as we get into the new reporting system as we come into next year, but that'll happen. I don't have anything in there that I would think is not under purview of the principal and their staff to operate.
I make a motion that we accept them, I mean, these Franklin Elementary student handbook changes.
A motion, second. All in favor, say a aye. Opposed, so moved. Macon Elementary College student handbook, Mr. Gibbs.
Yes, sir. Mostly what we changed are dates, and names, we've got a couple, we will have a couple of assignments at the end of the year. The biggest change is that we put a clause in here for college textbooks, that if students return them or lose, return them in unsuitable condition, or they lose them, and they must replace them, just like a high school textbook. We put that in where the college textbooks, because we provide, we purchase and provide college textbooks to our students. So, that's consistent of what we do with the public schools, the public school, other than that, it's, it's the dates and names.
So, no substantial changes.
Just little textbooks, I recommend you force very good. Any other questions? A motion, accept. A motion, second and third, all in favor, say a aye. All opposed, so moved. Transportation contract, Paula.
Yes, this is a request for contract with a parent to transport a student with a disability that cannot ride the bus.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second. I'm sure it's August's standard, as we've done always before. A motion, second, all in favor, say a aye. Opposed, so moved. Athletic testing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is our drug test results for the athletic department in two thousand twelve, thirteen school year. Those results are broken down by school, how many actual tests were completed, how many were sent to the lab for analysis. Little bit down this year, we had one thousand one hundred and forty-four tests last year, so there's some seventy tests smaller, could be by a little bit of a drop in participation. But we did have fewer results being sent to the lab than we've had in the past, so I believe that it's beginning to be a better determinant. I'll answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Moore? This is just for some purposes only. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you for your, I think you and yours and Lynn's efforts on that behalf, I know it takes us, it takes up a little time, which I think's why we're talking about the next, the next...
Perfect segue into the next topic. This is our cost analysis, and I want to bring a couple of things to board attention, one of which is that in the last analysis, we did not have tax figured in with the quote that was provided by PDBTS. So, I want to bring that to your attention first. Kit costs will be slightly higher than what we have been paying. We've been paying roughly seven dollars and ninety-five cents each for each cup. With PDBTS, that cost would go to eight dollars and fifty-two cents each. And if you look down below at the cost analysis based on this year's results, you'll see that it is some four hundred dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars more total projected costs than what we spent last year. However, we will have an independent third party conducting those tests, and I feel that that would be beneficial. We also got another quote from a company called DAMP, but their kit cost was around thirteen dollars each, was the quote that I received, plus thirty-five dollars for confirmation of results, so really, they're not in the ballpark. If you look down the bottom, on the right-hand side, those are the total costs, BIB, from PDBTS, DAMP, and what we use right now, which is Noble, Lynn, and myself. The second page is the service agreement that I would like to bring to your attention, with, between Macon County School System and PDBTS, invented drug testing services, sorry, I can't speak it, and the agreement that Mr. Hining helped us prepare. And I'm sure he would be glad to answer any questions you may have about that service agreement.
LLC Limited Life Building Company.
It's just, the only thing limited is the liability. It just, it's the, it's the reason that you have any corporate forms, is to say, this is my company, but I'm not liable for what it does directly. You wanna sue something to the company, very, very common.
We're out of the suit, look, the Board of Education.
I'm not sure I follow you.
Are we, we won't be held accountable then? That's why the jury's just so as you know, you probably done that footage, you gotta be right.
Yeah, I mean, that's always, unfortunately, in our, in our world, the default answer is if you can be sued, you're gonna get sued. But I don't think there's, I don't really see any particular reason for concern with this whole, with this arrangement, I really don't. And I think that really, to finally have taken the responsibility for doing this and placing it in the hands of somebody who does it sort of professionally, and get it out of the hands of your personnel director, where it's just, I mean, not worth the system's time or the risk of not having all of your attention devoted to personnel matters, you're far better off and safer with it this way.
I would agree with that.
A motion, here, second. Any other discussion?
I noticed, Mr. Moore, that the agreement automatically renews unless either party decides to give written notification of it, so we essentially would not make that next year, other than just to say it's being renewed.
Correct. If everything goes well, we won't have to do anything at all, or renew it another year. And it is also terminable by either side, just at that will, that's just what it is.
The price, Mr. Moore, you think it will be reasonably the same, I mean, it probably depends on a number of things, but...
You know, I can't predict, but I would hope that it would stay reasonably the same. If we begin to see that price spike, then we can certainly solicit this again and see what we come up with. But by far, as you can see from the information page previous, this by far is the cheapest house corporation that would actually jump in and do the testing.
Motion, subject, for any way, it's good.
That we can cancel anytime, we just, it's great, same old concern. Any other question? I have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor, say a aye. If opposed, so moved. Summer adventure camp.
I wasn't really expecting to speak, but I'll give you a quick rundown on what's going on, we're geared up right now. We're, of course, a long summer. We have a full week of transfer staff, and then we have five weeks of camp with the students. Camp this year, of course, being two weeks longer than last year, we kept the same weekly price, but our overall price has increased. It's right at twenty-two dollars a day, we feed them three meals, and that covers all their field trips and everything. It breaks down to about two dollars and twenty cents an hour, which is awesome, because you couldn't find a baby center anywhere, keep your kids for that, and feed them three meals. So, we're real excited, we're partnering with Rudden Full stride Horse Farm in Hayfield to do some horseback riding with the kids, and divisions, gymnastics, we're gonna be doing some things with them. We're also very excited about the rec park, the new facilities out there, it's looking really good, and the kids are all excited about that. Our camp is going to start June the 10th, and it'll run through August the 8th, expecting anywhere between a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids, being that it's a long summer, I'd say we'll be closer to two hundred, because parents start thinking about that long summer and wanting to get their kids out of the house. So, we're real excited, and hopefully, we'll have a nice slideshow for you from August.
Credit card, we still need to put forms of approval.
My recommendation is we allow the camp to operate, it is an enterprise fund, meaning that the board does not subsidize that, that they, that they pay them on the, so we're not, we're encouraging, but we're not funding it, it's funded by the parents, and the payment is paid to the people who operate the camp, including the transportation. thing.
So basically, we're being asked to approve as presented, both for the dates and for the, for the cost.
And then the divisions cost, is incorporated in that twenty-two dollars a day also.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the camp for this one.
Second, second emotion. Any other questions? All in favor, say if I say, say aye. Any opposed, so moved. Dr. Duncan.
Two items here. I was asked by some principals to, just to kind of clarify, where we were previously on students attending the elementary schools from out of the district, not out of the county, but out of the district. So if they live in East Franklin District, that's where they attend school. If they live in the Iowa District, that's where they attend school. Feel like, and I told them that we pretty well settled that last year, that they were grandfathered in if they were there, but that we were not accepting any new students from out of the district. So if a student is finishing their fourth grade at, for example, at East Franklin, and that parent wanted to send their kindergarten there, then our answer would be that you can't do that because it's out of district. There's always an appeal process that sometimes end up having to be handled on an individual basis. But I think as a general rule, what we did last year was very productive and satisfactory. Didn't have any, really any questions about it all, and the principals have done a very good job of, I say policing that, which is a pretty strong word. We get the data managers and the school secretaries, the also, the principals and assistant principals do a good job when people just try to bring their kids and they live in another part of the, and we do have a lot of mobility. Sometimes it's a family situation, and we have to allow them to attend, let's say, Cartuvage till that situation gets straightened out. Then if it turns out that they do, then they're going to be terminated in East Franklin's own, then we last sentence, we go students over there. But that's, that's just a clarification, I think, for the principals to operate like we did last year with that. The second thing is we have a number of students that attend Highland School that are located outside Macon County. And there's about eleven students in there, and my understanding, looking into that, is that paperwork is supposed to be filed with the school, and we're provided a list of those students on an annual basis. We do not get any funding for those students, so that's about a hundred thousand dollars of funding that is, that is, actually, we're not, we're providing the education to the students, but we're not receiving any ADA funds or any of our allotment funds based on that. We do receive from any number of those parents of those students, tax money, because many of them do have, obviously have property in Raglan County, but they also have property in, in Macon County. But I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that they are out of district, and we have routinely, my understanding is that those have been approved for a number of years. But just to make you aware, if you've got a question, we have some kids who live in Raglan County that attend Highland School, that, that is correct. And Mr. Chairman, they provide you with proper paperwork on that, or if you ask me anything?
Yes, sir. Before we accept them as students, we check whether prior school, we check discipline, we check academic records. And, and even when they're at our school, they have to maintain certain academic and behavior standards to stay at our school. We monitor them pretty closely, and some of them are children of parents that work for the town of Highlands. And we work pretty closely with the town of Highlands, and so we certainly allow them.
Just a fairly unique item situation, but, but it's something annually we need to know about, that those students are in our, in our school system. Those two items was basically just discussion. And if you have any questions about it, the principals know their directions, because we do have kids registering now and this type thing for, for next year.
Any questions, Dr. Duncan? And we'll move on to our athletic expenditure assessment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we did a informal survey to find out what different school districts in western North Carolina, comparable in size, some bigger, some smaller, we're doing as far as participation fees and mileage fees for athletics. This is what we got. It ranges from, in Buncombe County, just a fuel charge, a yearly fee. Cherokee County has a fuel charge with some, I would say, caveats. If it is a school in an adjoining county, they don't charge a fuel assessment. If it's a conference game, they don't charge a fuel assessment, but if they go far away, then it's sixty-five cents per mile. Aywood County, of course, we play Tuscola and Pisgah, there is a yearly fee per athlete, and there is a fuel charge for each four-way game. Henderson County has no participation fee, but they do have a fuel charge. And it is also broken down between middle and high school, and it's also used if they're out of season. They take, let's say, a bus to a summer camp, then that would also hold true. Jackson County, yearly fee plus a fuel charge. So this is for your information only, what other districts are doing around this concerning. Participation fees and transportation. Answer any questions you may have at this time.
Right now, we do neither.
We do neither. And we would love to continue to do neither. But hard times, running about, hard measures, so we may have to begin to look at this.
Just hang on with that information.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask you a dumb question, Mr. Moore. When you say, for example, Cherokee County, sixty-five cents per mile?
Yes, sir.
Are we talking per student?
No, sir. That's if the bus travels, let's say, I, I don't know, let's say they go to Ashland School.
Right.
You would, you would be charged, that team, that specific program would be charged sixty-five cents per mile.
That trip, that trip.
For that trip, yes, sir.
I want to make sure I understood. I thought that's what it was, if you make up a little bit sure.
And as you well understand, what we get reimbursed for fuel isn't how much it costs. This is just for your information.
It's part of our liability to the school system, and that, and it is information, there's plenty of time for you to, to act on it if you, if you want to. If you don't, then, then you don't, but you would have a lot of time to, 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 to the next few months to, to look at that, again, from, as our budget becomes more solidified. Like I said, we'd like not to be, not to have to do that, but again, it's not unreasonable to expect this. And we also have to look at that in terms of not just athletics, but all the sorts and stuff too. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Any questions? I asked you, Duncan, if I'm not mistaken.
Or if you want him to look at any other county, he'd be happy to do that. These are just, these are the ones that we compete with on a, on a regular basis.
Curriculum instruction approval items, our school improvement plans for Highland School, Ms., Ms. Guntrell?
Yes, Highland School has submitted their school improvement plan. They have a plan for reading and for math.
Any questions? If not, are you motion, we approve the Highland School's improvement plan?
I would make a motion to accept Highland School's improvement plan.
Second. Emotion second. All in favor, say if I say aye. Any opposed?
And this would be effective, you mean, or is it?
Actually, it's, it's been, it, we've been, yes, we've worked it out.
Right, because it says two thousand, what, two thousand?
It says two fourteen, but that would include the thirteen school year.
Correct. Okay. Macon Early College?
Macon Early College has chosen to do their school improvement plan, looking at students that are graduating with not only a high school diploma, but a two-year college degree. And so we were looking at what we've done in the past and tried to increase that as well. So that's part of their new schools project, is to encourage students to get both the degree and the diploma.
What is the amount, right, number right now, Todd? Those students are doing, when you say you want to get to, to your projection is a hundred percent?
Of students with an A degree diploma, yes. We've got seventeen graduates this year. It's a little bit odd this year. We have seventeen graduates, and of those seventeen, twelve will have a high school diploma and an A degree. Remaining five will have many college credits, varies on how much they have. Last year, we had like fourteen graduate, I think twelve were A degree and diploma. This year's a little bit of a down year.
So here it's seventy percent range right now.
That's approximately, yes, sir.
I, I noticed here, one year projection is to go to eighty-five percent next year, and then to increase that to a hundred year old, a hundred year old, or two-year period, a hundred over the two-year period.
Yes, sir. I, I think with the, the graduating, the projected graduates for the thirteen, fourteen school year, I think that's a very tangible number.
And remember, students, some of them get this within four years and others within five.
And, and all will graduate, all will graduate with some college credit at the minimum.
Any other questions, Mr. Gibbs? Got your motion, if we approve the improvement plan for Early College, so moved? Second. Emotion second, all in favor? Any opposed, so moved. Macon Middle School?
Macon Middle School has done their school improvement plan, looking at reading and math, and wanting to improve both schools, the scores in both those areas.
We'll have a chance, any, any questions? I don't know if Mrs. Mas is on here, so.
Much motion to approve?
Motion approved, second. All in favor? Any, any opposed, so moved. And Union Academy?
And Union has done their school improvement plan, looking at their reading scores in the middle school. They're, they're extremely low, and so they were looking at how they could raise those reading scores.
This is from a, with middle grade students, Nancy, right?
Yes, it's all, it's with the middle, supposed to be the seventh and eighth.
Now, this is, as we go forward, this is one of our most challenging academic areas that we have anywhere, because we have about eighty percent of those students in middle grades over there that are not, and, and, and it will change, it will move forward, I think, as we go into that program. Paul would have some ideas, and other people have some ideas about how to improve that situation there, but that's, it's going to be a challenge at best, but they stated some goals, and we hope that they could, it's a, it's a dramatic opportunity there that they created, what you said, I, I hope we can make that. Much motion to approve?
Much approved, second. All in favor? Any opposed, so moved. Is that all of the improvement plans for all the schools, Nancy, correct? Uh, discussion items, average class size assessment as of the twenty-second of March.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is just our information that we've been presenting each board, each board meeting concerning our elementary class sizes and the numbers. They've stayed fairly constant the entire year. We haven't seen a large influx or a large outgo, so to speak, of our student numbers, but that is for your information. At this time, we'd like to answer questions you may have. And also be advised that there is one bill in the legislature that would eliminate class size requirement. Really interested in things that are going on down the road.
I remember, I related it, aren't they predicting that very well could become fact?
Very well could become fact, and we would still proceed our allotment based on our teachers, but as far as numbers, it wouldn't have anything to do with any fact.
Be very interesting.
It will be interesting, so. Just be aware that that could be on the horizon.
Also, the next, yeah, the next slide is the, is the attendance for, is the ones that we can count. In that three twenty-seven, do you, that does not include that eleven, does it?
That's, that's correct. It does not.
So in Highlands, you would need to add eleven to that, which you're thinking that at three thirty-eight. Those are the only ones that we can actually submit to state pool. So if you had, you're making your own notes or corrections, you'll know that that would be, say, forty-three oh eight would be forty-three nineteen.
And first, I remember that we started at forty-four, where?
We were probably around forty-four thirty, forty-four twenty-five. It's interesting. Of course, we have some graduates mid-year too, but it doesn't reduce it by that. Dr. Ball, how many of your graduates did we have at Franklin High?
My last one, I think, had thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Which is substantial. Well, thirteen's.
When I, when I started here, in June, had forty-two seventy-seven. That's once you ended the school year. So that's about thirty, well, in that case, at twenty-three, about forty. We've had about a hundred and twenty-three students come in, a hundred and fifty-something come in, a hundred and twenty-three students go out. So we'll, we hope we'll net, you know, it doesn't change very much. For the schools, it does change a lot, because there's a lot of mobility, but for the actual numbers, it's not, not a big number to change. And that's what we use for our projections for our class, class loads this month.
Any other questions, Mr. Moore or Dr. Duncan? Board members, I thought we'll move on, I think, under buildings and grounds, I didn't see anything there. Dr. Duncan, let's go over there.
Just as about as information, did you put that in there? But, you know, we had a little, a little setback on our, on our Highlands project due to some bid difficulties or something like that, but all of that's been worked out. The county commissioners are expected to accept the bid. It was the bid that was of the person who got the bid before, and we had to do a rebid. That person still has the bid, and will not delay the project whatsoever without getting started on time and that type thing, so. You're, you're welcome to see that information. It doesn't really affect us, except to know that it is the on again, off again, is now on again.
On again.
We're rolling.
We hope we continue to roll forward.
Yes.
Business of finance, fund, redistribution for Franklin's High School, Angie?
We just have one, and they are just transferring their Puerto Rican money into the general athletic camp.
Any questions? Not, are your motion for approval? Second. Emotion second, all in favor? All, any opposed, so moved. Let's do both the state and the federal at the same time, Angie.
The state is mainly just regular, finishing out the year and trying to clean up things. We have an extra five hundred and twenty-five dollars coming in in interest in P R C O O three, so that's the only additional revenue. The rest of them are just standard amendments. Federal, we do have a little bit extra coming in that we had to increase, but most of it is for exceptional children's areas. And the, and the remaining amendments are just the same as the state, you know, just around trying to get the year ready to close out.
Have I had a chance to go over any questions, Angie, on those two amendments? Not, are your motion we approve? And emotion second, all in favor, say if I say aye. Any opposed, so moved. Public school building capital fund?
That is the form that we discussed at our joint meeting with commissioners last Thursday night, and that's just the, they just need your approval to draw down that money for the debt service.
The board members have talked about this, and that's really, I think, that's what the fund is designated for, so. Any motion for approval?
No motion for approval.
Second. All in favor, say if I say aye. Any opposed, so moved. Budget discussions, Dr. Duncan?
We had a rather lengthy discussion, I know, the other night at the joint meeting of county commissioners, our official Charles attendance input at that meeting. At that meeting, there was distributed a, I guess you'd say about eleven by seventeen form, and on the far right-hand side, talked about our requested budget. This was a budget that we were proposing to the county without any cuts being made. This was a budget that we were proposing to the county without any cuts being made of anything to give them what our basic needs were as far as the school system. And what I, I guess what I'm asking for is a consensus that we, in essence, turn that over to them. They will have to discuss it, they will come back to us with an amount of money, a bunch which we will then have to build our budget and try to get it back into them. We will no doubt need a special board meeting prior to the fifteenth of May if Mr. Horton says that, that we must have official action by the board on a balanced budget to go to them. He says, no, you can, you can wait till you're more sure of the dollars coming in. But I think that they would plan to designate the dollars for the county at a meeting in May. And if they do that, that will give us our absolute starting point of what we need to do. I have no idea what the state's going to do, you know, it'll probably be June, but that's just still speculation about all that. We know we do include some money for that if the governor decides that raises can come forward. I hate to ever report to you that we're giving raises and reverses. I don't understand that. Can you explain that? I listen, I still don't understand when, when you tell me that by any means. But basically, it's not an approval action, but it is a document that, in fact, they already had it, but I just want to be able to report to Mr. Horton that in board meeting, we did say that this was what we'd like for them to look at as far as.
I think it's a, something, what does it propose?
Propose preliminary.
Preliminary.
Yes. Yeah, preliminary budget based upon our request for funding for next three years.
Maybe get it back to us soon.
Right. For the record, that amount of money is nine point, nine million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And we're working hard to try to have something left over at the end of the school. Angie, over not to promise. We're working every day. School, we're just about to cut off any time to try to spend the rest of some actual resources.
Anyone's there? Anyone have any other questions, Dr. Duncan, in the meeting, on what we have with our budget?
My wife said something, I guess she meant something worth it. I proposed this time when I was alive, I guess, said that. What other business do you steal things from home and take to school for your business? We're doing that right now.
I have a word.
Lady told me the day she took one to her kid's toys to take to school. Kind of that.
Sometimes. I think we're, we're looking at a situation where we do have a plan, we have to put in place, plays for some reductions. But what my concern is, I need to work one year at a time instead of looking at next year. I don't, I do not know where the reduction would come from next year. If we're cutting like we are this year, and we have to put those in, this is plan B, I guess. I don't know where you're finding much money next year to cut it. We just have to reverse that. This is a, the plan B that we have is doable, but the plan B we have to have next year won't be doable. Say that hopefully. Well, the more, the year for a warning, anytime you operate without fund balance and with state reversions, you can't predict one year the next what you'll have. It's a poor way to run a business, I know that, which the state would come to that realization at some point. And everybody from the commissioner on down is, you know, well, what's the answer, which is absolutely ridiculous. Okay, we'll do the reversion. By the way, we'll also take the class size off. So don't come at us about needing money to keep kindergarten class at eighteen. Go ahead and put thirty in there. You know, just let them rock on. I mean, so they justify the reversion by saying to the class size, hey, you don't have a class size. That is absolutely the worst way to run an educational institution or anything I've ever heard of, but that's, I'm through.
I know, by the way, let me have this test, though. No matter how many are in there, I'll be sure he can pass his test.
Right, right. Yeah, be sure the performance level's above eighty percent with even thirty or twelve in there.
I think you're pushing all our frustration, Dr. Duncan.
No wonder, I don't think anyone disagrees with that.
As far as I know, Board of Education, information, worship or information, Dr. Duncan, do you have anything else for the board?
Just the art show on May the fifth. You'll, you'll be invited to a lot of activities. I'll be out of office a couple of days this week, and then as you, as you look at various events, if you can or cannot attend, I'm sure you'll receive something to go to every night of the week from almost now then to school. But, you know, those that you can't accept will be there. Those that I can, I certainly will, and there obviously will be some that will not be here for graduation. But our next meeting is at, is at Nantahala School, and that will be on May the twentieth because of the Memorial Day weekend on there. And the other thing, let me just thank you all for attending, those of you that could, the flag raising ceremony that we had out in front of our building. No sooner had we gotten it up than we had the disaster in Boston and were requested to have it at half staff. That, that came back up to full staff today, which was, that was lifted, I think, on the twentieth. We may have to bring it down tomorrow. We got a resolution from the governor talking about the unfortunate accident of the Marine Corps helicopter out of the bottom back in March, but he's going to Camp Lejeune tomorrow to pay his respects, and he's asked that we fly half staff on the, on Tuesday, which will be tomorrow. So we do that. Appreciate everybody's help in that, or attending that particular ceremony. Thank you.
We appreciate you thinking about it. Very nice. We want to fight every day it's about to be.
Those things that kind of fades in, you don't realize until someone with fresh eyes realizes it and makes it into something to bring forth part of the prophecy. Very nice. Any discussions, Dr. Duncan? If not, I think we have a closed session established. Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir. The purpose for the closed session is that given one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one eight six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. And I'm also going to ask you to cite, sorry. One forty-three dash three eighteen point one one eight three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve attorney's rights.
Attorney, give us the two reasons for a closed session. Are you motion that we, so adjourned? Second. Motion second. All in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose? So moved. We'll be coming out, we'll turn, that's not a major problem, but I've dragged up two longways.
Laura's probably ready.
Back at nine nineteen P.M. At this time, I'll entertain motion that we come at a closed session, open session. Second. All in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose? I think the first motion, I think the first item business is, Dr. Duncan, I think you wanted to announce a transfer, a reassignment.
Assistant principal, I'm going to reassign Mr. Chris Reese from Union Academy to the assistant, assistant principalship at the high school effective July first this year.
And that's something that, of course, is part of the superintendent, that doesn't make any type, that doesn't require any type of board action. That is something that he has chosen to do. Any other motions that need to come before the board at this time?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we table the administrative contract list, and we table the one-year probation period, lateral entry, official certification to a meeting on May the thirteenth at five thirty at Central Office.
I don't think we have to table it for the timeframe.
No.
I think the motion should refer to the action.
Correct.
Mr. Schill, you want to make your motion to, to cover that?
Yes.
I understand the motion would be that at this time, the board is being asked to table any action on administrative contracts and on the one-year. Just table the action. Are you a second? A motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose? So moved. Any other motions that need to come before the board at this time?
I'd like a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second. So you're, consent as, as the rest is estimated, Mr. Schill? Is that right? We have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda estimated. Have a motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say if I say an aye. You oppose?
I am asleep.
Any other, any other motions come before the board?
I'd like a motion to wait until the meeting on May thirteenth at five thirty P.M. At Central Education.
So based on that's a motion, we're going to continue this meeting, return all the action, take place on May the thirteenth at five thirty P.M. That's your motion, Mr. Schill?
Yes, sir.
Favor second. A motion second. Any other discussion? Thank you for saying if I say an aye. You oppose? So moved. Now, I think, Mr. Duncan has mentioned he'll be out of office, it's not a formal thing, but he'll be out of office, be out of district for the next three days, but moved this week.
And that meeting on May thirteenth will be here?
It'll be here at five thirty at the Central Office.
Okay.
Anything else come before the board? A motion second. In a second. All in favor? You oppose? So moved.